You go.
Six feet.
All set?
Yep.
All right. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Village Planning Commission of Elmont for July 6, 2023 to order, please. May I have a roll call?
Eriaski?
Here.
Me?
Here.
Zunder?
Here.
Schneider? Jake?
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Unless there are any changes, alterations, or corrections, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I have a move over here from Steve. Support from Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of June 1, 2023. They are included in your packet. And unless there are any changes or alterations, I would ask, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes.
With editing in mind and find them to be perfectly acceptable and so move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ellen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Public comments. We have no, nobody here from the public, but I would include it in your packet. We should, Caitlin indicated we should at least acknowledge the fact that one of our members, Bernie Colka, has formally resigned from the commission. As you can see by the short letter that he sent Kim, so I would acknowledge the fact for the minutes that Bernie is no longer a member of our commission. He will be missed. He was a very active member and a very good member, so. There are no other public comments. There are no public hearings, so that we move to new business. The first item on the agenda is the Planning Commission member's status. This, I think, originated at our last meeting, and Kim has provided a little bit of discussion information for us relative to this particular item. And as noted, I understand this item was discussed at council last night?
Yes.
Steve, would you like to bring us up to speed a little bit?
I very much would like to do that.
Thank you.
Make sure. Scammers don't call me. So there was somewhat an intense discussion and exchange between staff administration, president of council, if there's council members, regarding what the status should be of any member of the Planning Commission. And my position was that members of the Planning Commission should be residents of the village of Elmont, very close to the environment and in touch with everything that's going on here. There was another position taken, I think primarily by village administration, that pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, that it was, it would be permissible to leave a non-resident member such as Bernie on the Planning Commission because the Michigan Planning Act enables it. It doesn't mandate that you have to appoint somebody that's not a village resident, but that you can if you so choose. It's discretionary. And from my discretionary position, I had announced to council a minute or two ago that I was not going to reappoint Bernie. Because he, and not, and not because, not as a reflection on him, because everybody agreed, good council member, good Planning Commission member, good park board president, very engaged in the community, good guy, and he contributed a lot. My position was that he had moved out of the village, had moved out of the Elmont community, had moved out of the county, and therefore should not be sitting on this commission. So there was a lot of back and forth on that issue, and Bernie resulted by resigning. However, part of the discussion that happened over the last couple of months or so, it one, it's a local control issue, and so part of what was discussed is, and as Kim had presented to council, if you want to change the requirements, then you're going to have to amend Planning Commission's bylaws. And so a present Planning Commission bylaws say members appointed by the council president ratified by council. That's it, without any further indications. And that would actually be Article 4, 4.1 of our bylaws, membership. Membership of the commission shall consist of seven members appointed by the village president. So it's my view, and I want to propose that the commission consider revising its bylaws. And I know the bylaws say you have to give so many days in advance, et cetera. So I'm suggesting that we put this on the agenda for our next meeting. But I'm, I'm going to be suggesting, I am suggesting, language which will read something along the lines of, "Membership of the commission shall consist of seven, excuse me, seven members who are residents of the village of Elmont and are appointed by the village president and approved by Elmont Village Council." So I want to propose language such as that, and could be put on the agenda for the next meeting we have. To take as broad a perspective as possible, considered adding language, and perhaps there would be, want to be some discussion this evening or maybe the next meeting, of adding a provision, something to the effect of, however, in the event that seven residents, which is what our bylaws call for, cannot be appointed to the Planning Commission or have not been appointed to the Planning Commission, then the non-resident, then a non-resident may be appointed to the Planning Commission pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enforcement Act. That would give the Planning Commission the ability to say, well, okay, we own a certain number of members, would really like this other person who has to be, under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, has to be a qualifier elector of another local government. And we could sit, could consider adding that. I'm not crazy about doing it, but we could do it because it potentially gives the Planning Commission more flexibility in the event that we can't find village residents to serve. And we do actually have that situation pending right now because we are down to five. So that's reality. And even the advertising for additional Planning Commission members, we know everybody comes flooding in, and we just don't accept any of them because we don't want to be overwhelmed. Or, I mean, alternative, we'd like to continue to exist. So I'm suggesting all of that and throwing that out. And I do have one other thing that I would like to address as far as our bylaws are concerned, which also came up at last night's council meeting regarding Planning Commission. But does any Planning Commission members have, want to have any discussion regarding what I just proposed, put on the table?
Pardon?
I don't think it's necessary. Can we just leave it the way it is? If we don't like the person, we'll, we'll just order it in. I mean.
You could. I, well, I think what Steve is indicating with the first part of the verbiage is that we only, we start out and only consider residents of the village first. And that, by putting that language in, that does that where it, it isn't in paragraph 4.1 right now.
Do we actually need that in there?
Yes, I think so, yeah. Because as right, right now, under membership, it doesn't mention anything about residency.
Right.
And so what Steve is indicating is that we should consider residents of the village first. That's the first part of what, you know, what the verbiage that he wanted to add to that. And so that we only consider, you know, residents of the village.
The reason that I'm proposing a language is that it was a position of some within village government, one that we couldn't do anything about Bernie. We had to leave him sitting here because there was no such provision. There was nothing requiring that you be a village resident. And we, the proposition was, and it was on the table, and we were heading towards a big fight essentially, because I had lots of legal arguments present, which were somewhat contrary to the village attorney's position as well as village administration. We couldn't do a damn thing about Bernie moving out. We had to leave him on. He was just there, and there wasn't a damn thing we could do about it. And my position was, yeah, we should be able to do something about it. So we were going to be stuck with someone who not only had moved from the village and left the Elmont community, but had left the county. And I found that totally inappropriate. And if it had been up to me, I would not have reappointed him. And people within the village saying, you can't do anything about it. He's there. He's stuck because you do not have a provision such as that, that you have to be a village resident to be on the Planning Commission. So we were going to be stuck with somebody that I was going to continue to oppose being on the Planning Commission.
What you're saying is that we should consider village residents first, and then if there's not village residents, then we can consider the two allowable by the Michigan Planning Act for non-residency. What you're saying now, though, also is, is we don't have an "ou." So if we're going to reconstruct the language, there should be language that, once a person serving on the board removes electoral residency, that the Planning Commission has the, has the ability to either retain or remove that person from the board. We, there should be a, should be in the bylaws that that should be a choice.
Yes.
Because if we don't do that, anything else we've said, we're still stuck.
Right, because the village attorney's opinion did rest on, it doesn't say when a vacancy occurs. So we could say that in this provision. So I agree. And as far as bringing the Michigan Enabling Act, I just threw it out there because I wanted to take a little broader perspective, just in case. I'm not crazy about throwing it in there, but I just threw it out there for discussion.
Reference, because that's, if we're ever going to appoint a non-resident, that's the source we would appoint from, the enabling of doing it. My concern about non-residents, other than the fact that they don't have hands-on in the game because they're not living here, is the fact that we had some influences a couple of years ago from the south, when we were considering certain candidates, that that whole community, that whole fluctuation's coming north. And, yeah, it's only two people, but we're not all spring chickens anymore. And 10 years from now, we don't know who's going to be sitting on this board. And if you get influence that we experienced during that period, it could, two people could heavily influence what happens in Elmont that wouldn't be residents. And so losing that kind of local control to people that don't have either skin in the game here because they don't live here, or B, are trying to get on the board for ulterior motives to help themselves influence what's going on here, could have detriment to, could have detriment, so I think.
So you see that happening to the Planning Commission?
Okay, so Bruce Township. When we went to hear the lady from Bruce Township, I was on the phone for hours, upon hours upon hours, with Bruce Township Looney Tunes telling me all their wackadilly stories. They're south of us. There's influence down at Blake's and all that other stuff that's already been before us a little bit. So if you get two people from there coming up here trying to influence stuff that's happening right on our border, yeah, I think on the Planning Commission, it could, it could influence, so.
Ever watch their meetings? You can go online, just like you can here, and watch their meetings. Their politics is toxic.
I mean, it might be, it might be a far shot, but it opens the door.
They had their local newspaper who ripped our potential candidate to shreds and called everything but a blankety-blank, send their paper tearing this potential nominee for a village manager to shreds to every member of the Elmont community. We were literally invaded. So Tim's pointing out what can happen, what actually did happen.
Probably a long shot with if two, if it actually happened, but if you get the right influences and the right chairs, and then get, if you get local influence and then two additional influences that are not local, all combining together, I'm not saying this group because, you know, but we know, we know what happened in the mid-'90s, too, when, when the village council wasn't run correctly here. It was, it was the same thing. I mean, it was residents here, but having that outside influence, I think, could have negative effect. So I, I think, I mean, I'm not opposed if an outside person that has ties to the community and could help the Planning Commission be appointed, but it would have to be a strong consideration, and I think a village resident should take precedence over any outside influence.
And of course, doing the nominating, and it was, again, come to the village president to appoint or not appoint.
There's protection there, but by making the bylaws, it would give us additional protection there.
Gary, what do you think? Should we put the residency issue in the bylaw?
Yeah, I, absolutely. I think that should be looked at first. And then, and it does give us some options, that's for sure. It opens some doors.
Don't you, I don't think so. That's certified, okay?
The thing, I think, the reason, I'm speaking for Steve, but I'm understanding what he's saying, is that currently, we have the latitude, under the current bylaws, to appoint non-residents, up to two.
Up to touring through the Michigan.
Still haven't.
But no, but wait, but wait. First of all, we would consider all residents of the village first. And then, if we chose, we could look at an outside person. But our first priority would be residents of the village. And I think by putting, changing the bylaw and putting that information in there, if somebody was reading the bylaws, oh, I'm not a resident, I'm not even going to apply, or I'm not, you know, you can't consider me anyway because we have the language in it that says you have to be a village resident first. And I think we're all of the same opinion that to get, if you want somebody to buy in, you want them to be a member of the village. I mean, let's face it, we would rather have all village residents than.
If you're going to have an outside influence, you want to have somebody that's within the community proper, either business owner or landowner or something like that, would probably be the next choice. I mean, there's, there's probably people that don't reside here that do business here or have a business here that would be qualified and have, and have.
Invested interest.
Invested interest, thank you. Invested interest in what's going on.
What's going on.
And not divisive interest.
The situation that arose with Bernie really brought it to a head, to a point.
Yeah.
It's like, okay, like it or not, we're stuck with this situation, but Bernie had decided on his own, what was the day of the council meeting? Kim got the letter of resignation from Bernie, so right up to that point, it's like, here we go, and we're about to enter into quite, quite a parsing of language battle. But essentially, we've been told nothing we could do. He's there, and you can't do a darn thing about it. And it's like, eh, wait a minute here. So I was going to advocate for the other position, and certainly it brought also ahead such that I thought our bylaws should be amended to do that. I don't, certainly don't see that, I can't see any harm in it, but I only see good. And it makes, remember, yeah, village resident, it makes it the priority.
But what happened with Bernie? I mean, he moved in the middle of his term. So do you want to discuss that? Where, what do you do?
I think it's brought up, I think there's been language in there that says that if the Planning Commission has the authority or the will of the Planning Commission for when the resident moves, is the will of the Planning Commission to either retain or remove that person from said seat?
So they would recommend to the president to remove, right?
Essentially.
The Planning Commission, we don't have that language now, but the Planning Commission has the ability to recommend removal of a resident, of a current sitting member that has removed residency from Elmont Village.
But that, I mean, language, what I'm suggesting is language to the effect that moving from the village, no longer being a village resident, creates a vacancy on the Planning Commission. And that was the essential thing that our village attorney indicated. It didn't create the vacancy, so you're stuck with it. And if we have language in there that, that in fact, moving does create a vacancy in the Planning Commission, I would think that would be the most appropriate way to proceed.
Well, I, I would like to, at the next meeting, could we bring back some, some language affecting the bylaws, and then we can discuss it further and modify it if we have to, and then go from there? Does that sound reasonable for all of us?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right.
Something should be discussed. One, one other issue.
Yes, go right ahead.
I don't mean to take too much time regarding bylaws. So something else, some solace that hit the fan last night at council was discussion about the Planning Commission's bylaws. And our village clerk, who does her usual excellent job, indicated to us, because it came up, the Planning Commission can amend its bylaws, but doesn't have to go to council for approval? And so Kim informed me, no, not really, because Article 9 just says, you know, indicates that Planning Commission can amend, and you have to vote pursuant to section 6.8, and that's an amendment. And one of our council members, and I agreed, and I didn't see anybody disagree with that. How can that be? A major body, a major governing body that's appointed by the village president, confirmed by village council, and we are the elected officials of the village, and the Planning Commission's autonomous, doesn't have any, play any subservient role to the council when you're not elected, council is elected, and shouldn't amendment of the Planning Commission bylaws be going, you can amend, but they have to go before council? We ran into a situation a few years back, under different leadership, at the DDA, where the DDA was taking, it's taking the position, this is before you were here, David, it was a lot of fun, we're autonomous, we don't care what you have to say. Drop dead and other nice words they were saying, and we can do whatever we want. We don't care what, what your position is. Excuse me? Like, nobody elected you, they elected us, and we, we run, we run the village, we are the supreme governing body, and how can that be? And it was a battle for a while until the DDA realized, like, mm, yeah, you're right. And now we see how the DDA is acting in terms of, we want to collaborate with the village, and yes, you are the, the governing body, but that was a situation that got ugly for a period of time. And so.
Situation, were their bylaws amended in any way to change that, or was that just a change of leadership?
And then they have been, I don't know that there's been actual change of others. Didn't they just do something? But, but certainly been a change of leadership and change in tone, and obviously substantially more cooperation, collaboration with the village. For instance, the village now does the DDA's budget, all that they're billing, et cetera, and now working together like that. And what had happened in previous years and what's happening now was, not so much a matter of writing, but a matter of understanding and working together or not working together. And I think it was just a misunderstanding, so I've appointed all you people, and you think, but you can tell us to go to hell? Excuse me? No. And so, you know, I kind of let them know, and we, we had some battles in public hearings at council over that, and they, they finally came around. But I, I mean, with regard to any of the various governmental bodies, the council is essentially, you know, the final word on it. It has to be, because we're, we're the elected officials.
Except on making amendments.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can stand out there and make all the amendments we want.
Right.
According, at least what's on paper right now.
Yes. So I'm suggesting we add, this is just a suggestion, that all such amendments, adding to Article 9, all such amendments to these bylaws shall be submitted to Elmont Village Council for its approval. Fairly simple language. And that's what I'm proposing, and we can discuss it.
We're, we're most all council members in favor of us doing something like that?
Yes, I certainly, we, we, one council member had a very strong opinion about it, and everybody else kind of like, mm, yeah. Nobody raised any concerns over bringing that issue to Planning Commission this evening because I indicated that's what I was going to do.
Sure, I understand.
And it just makes sense. I mean, and it's not, it's not antagonistic, it's, it's not hostile in any manner, manner, it's just like, we all need to work together.
Well, the thing is, is that when it comes to appointing members, even, you know, you can appoint a member, but it still has to go before council.
I always, I, I.
You have to make a recommendation to a council for us to be on, on this commission.
Technically, the language that I use is, I am appointing so-and-so and request council ratification. That's the way I word it.
But, yeah, we can make any amendments to this thing we want without even considering council at all.
Right.
That doesn't fit too well. I don't, my personal opinion, I don't have a problem including the language that, you know, that gets, it gets approved by council. Kim, now, Tim, are you in agreement with that, too? All right, then that would be the other language that we add, besides the residency issue and the additional language on Article 9 under amendments. And if everyone is agreed, then we'll rediscuss this at the next meeting.
All right. And council for this time. Appreciate it.
Yep, no, that's, that's fine. It's, it's an important issue. I mean, it really is.
Absolutely is.
So anything else for, for this item, or should we move on? Ready to move on? All right. Caitlin, you have some work to do for us tonight.
I have some things to present.
Yes.
So with me tonight, I do have Brad from Wintrim. He has been helping me with the master plan project and invited him to come along to meet everybody and be able to present some of his work he's done.
You'll find we're in a media book group most of the time.
Good to know.
Hi, Brad.
Hi.
So one of the first things that we'll do, I'll go kind of in sequence of how the material is in your packet, I guess first and foremost is to talk about what do you want this document to look like? We are making a standalone master plan at the moment, and so we kind of have two competing themes in a way. And so you have, I guess, what I would consider your triple apple tree kind of concept that we have still on one of our welcome signs and in the website and things of that nature. And then you have more of with the unison with our high school, the Raiders, and the font that you currently have on your water tower. And so these are two concepts. And so I guess I wanted to, your current draft language doesn't meet either one of these, but I wanted a general design direction. What do you want as a major policy guidance document, which is the identity you would like?
Where did the Raider issue surface, may I ask? You know, as, just from the school? You know, to show, to show support for the school, is that, is that where it came? Did any one person bring it up by any chance?
I think the idea for the water tower came because they wanted to, they wanted to repaint it so that it didn't look so washed out. And so then they had the idea, if you did a simpler logo that didn't have three, four colors on it, then we would do it for free. And so that's when they came with the two font of the name.
See.
As a good alternative, but it's very different than your tree scape. So it's hard to have Raider. So it's hard to have Raiders eating apples in a lot of sense.
Put the tree out.
Right. Right.
My reaction, one, it should be Raiders. And if you think about it, it's more of a community thing. The football games, everybody shows up, I don't see anybody showing up for apple festivals. So from that standpoint, in community, it makes a lot of sense. You see banners, Raider banners around, and graduations, banners for kids graduating from Raider schools. So to me, it would make a lot of sense to do that. In terms of getting a reaction out of the public as to this master plan, apples and they don't care. But something like this would bring up some, you know, community energy, I would think, I think it'd be a wise thing to do. Now, being an old school person, I actually have an old Spanish ship like this. It's a model. So I kind of like that. Should it be on something other than a ship? I'm not sure what else we do.
If we're going to go with the Raider theme, we should follow kind of what the schools and what the water tower looks like. I would opt the ship, I would do the A. If you're going to use another logo, they use the dude on the horse that's like on the high school building, because we want to be consistent.
Right. That's a good idea.
Yeah. Makes sense.
With everything being the same, then it's a unified approach as opposed to throwing the apple tree in.
Does staff have any opinion on planting the apple tree?
A lot of people don't know that this used to be orchards.
You don't really have association with it.
Right.
Right. And I think the...
And the only reference you see is the sign when you come into town, you know, at the south end. And that needs to be repainted. But that has the apple tree on it, and it says...
It's on the north side, too.
Yes, it is.
It probably should be redesigned. I mean, that's long in the past.
Yeah.
That's reality. When it first got on council, yeah, it was still apples, but 28 years later, no. Just, and things move along, they move along at a quicker and quicker pace, so it makes sense.
So the only branding component that I'll point out is we don't want to directly copy what they do at the high school, I would recommend, because then you have a branding issue associated with, what's the village and what's the school? And so I wouldn't do the exact same logo or wouldn't recommend it, but again, if ships is not our thing nautically, because we aren't near any water, I get it. And so that's something we'll take back, I just wanted to let you know, we wouldn't copy the exact same horse, because I do think from a branding perspective, we want a little bit, we can be complimentary without being replicant.
Same theme.
Do you have a mask on?
I think just the A. I think just the A.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Like you've got it now.
Is the flag okay? So on the top left, we have the A on a flag.
Yeah, that looks good.
Yeah.
All right. Strip the nautical, keep the A in the simplistic format.
Yes.
Can do. Can do.
The black background, you know, the A stands out real well.
It does.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Director wears orange and black every day. Seriously. Mr. Elmont Gell all the way.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just throw out a quick comment regarding the branding issue. About a month ago, I started kicking around in some casual discussion with some folks about rebranding the town. You know, the apple theme, you know, came up, you know, as far as the old sign that's on the south and north end of town. And because we're working on a project to do a beautification project on the Trunk Line Bridge on the south end of town, and we're going to be getting some approval from MDOT hopefully next week to be able to move forward with that project. But in some conversation with the Emlay City folks, I guess Emlay Township, that apparently they've got some bragging rights to claim that they are the gateway to the thumb. Well, I've done some research and I found out that other communities think they're the gateway to the thumb, too, because of where they're located. Like, there's a community that's on the west side of the thumb that thinks they're the gateway to the thumb from the west, and, you know, Emlay City thinks that they are. And the city manager there, I don't know if he was joking, but he said, everybody up in Emlay City hates that phrase. They don't like that we're the gateway to the thumb. I said, well, I want to buy the copyright to that. But once we, you know, started the ball rolling about the beautification project on the bridge, what came to my mind is that since we are the beginning of Lapeer County, that maybe we are the bridge to the thumb. I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but, you know, if we're going to, you know, capitalize on a new theme for the village and promote it in such a way, with all of the traffic that goes through our town and the efforts of our DDA, you know, the new excitement that's going to brew this year with the Heritage Festival and a holiday parade and so on, that maybe this is the time to at least consider some new catchphrase that identifies us, whether that's the bridge or the gateway or whatever, you know, you folks might have some suggestions or counsel, et cetera. So I just wanted to throw that out as part of the brainstorming on taking advantage of this master plan update and maybe remarket ourselves. Yeah, that's a good point, that we are the beginning of Lapeer County. I mean, you know, the township and then the village, and that's the start of Lapeer County.
Social media, whatever, is branding. The whole thing, branding. I mean, you had programs saying, this guy thinks I'm the murderer, there's a television program like this. You don't realize that people would rather believe that you're a murderer than the truth of the matter, because you're branding as a murderer. So branding becomes the thing.
Speaking of social media, run a contest.
What?
Run a contest.
Top of the contest, I know one of the topics that Caitlin's going to broach here later is the survey. Maybe we incorporate that into the survey questionnaire as well. That's a good idea. Then we get some feedback one way or the other.
Yeah.
Okay, Caitlin, could we put something in the survey?
Yeah, I think we could potentially, I think you can make an easy discussion from a survey perspective to say, do we keep with our original branding or do we move to the Raider? I think that is an easy survey. When you have a fill-in-the-blank, tell me what you think, that becomes doozy. And so I do think, because we do, other than the community survey, we also have the open house.
Well, clarification.
Correct.
The Raider theme, I don't think we need to run a contest.
Oh, okay.
The answer should be four, but the...
Oh, as in like a slogan?
Yeah.
Because I think a slogan...
Because if you throw branding out there, yeah, that's way too much.
Sure. And so...
The slogan.
Right. So I think from a slogan standpoint, I've found more success as that as a community meeting sort of situation. And so one of the other public engagements process that we have at the end is an open house. And so I think that's something that we could have a large banner for people to throw up. Give us a slogan idea and put that as part of the advertisement for the open houses. We are picking a new village slogan, and so help develop that with us, and that's part of that open house discussion. Then you can have people put their ideas up, and then you can have people vote on it, as opposed to survey, it's one and moving forward.
Survey, if you just throw the survey on there, not just saying, give us what you think the theme of Elmont is, or give us what your slogan of Elmont is, then you're getting a thousand ideas that can be looked at that you might not get from the open house. And it's just one simple question. It's not, it's simple. It's a fill-in, if they leave a blank, they leave a blank, but if we get one good suggestion out of a thousand things that we could use, it's worth having it in the survey.
Okay. Is that the sentiment of everyone?
Yeah. Why don't we do that? Please.
All right. All right, can do. All right, so, yep, digressing. So I'm going to hand it over to Brad now. He's going to talk about some of the highlights of our demographic information, so.
By the way, all this information is very attractive. I looked at every one of them, read every one of them, they're very nice, very nice.
Fascinating, because my understanding of demographics and where it sits, and I'm reading this, like, oh, yeah, it's like, boom, right, running, heading on to things that I thought were going to happen, so it's fascinating.
Glad you guys read it. That's great news.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
All right. I'm going to...
Terrific.
Say in a lot of numbers, so if you have any questions, or I'm talking too fast, or whatnot, just jump in. Okay, so why are we doing this? Demographics data can help provide a basis for understanding communities. It can be a powerful tool for tracking change over time and for uncovering the needs or strengths of a community to guide planning, policy development, or decision-making. I'll be going over some key findings focused on the data tables and figures in this section. So, population table on page 2-1. All shown places experienced varying degrees of growth from 1950 to 1970. Most saw significant population boom from 1970 to 1980, barring the village of Romeo, which experienced a loss of about 500 residents. Steady growth resumed into 2000. Elmont Township and Lapeer County were the only places in which the population increased between 2000 and 2010, a likely result of the recession. During this time, the village of Elmont lost 129 residents, which is about a 4.6% decrease. In 2020, the village of Elmont had the largest increase in population by percentage at 6.4%. Elmont Township saw the second largest at 5.3. Next one, median age table on page 2-2. All communities have similar age distributions with high percentages of individuals between 25 to 54 years. The highest range for the village of Elmont is 25 to 34 at 15.8% of the population. The oldest community, except for the county, is Elmont Township with a median age of 43.9. Next, population forecast figure 2-2. Lapeer County trends through 2045 are based on a September 2019 report published by the State of Michigan Department of Technology, Management, and Budget. According to the report, the population for Lapeer County is expected to decrease by the year 2045 to 85,115 citizens, a decrease of 3.9% from its 2020 population of 88,619. This data is from the state, so it has a little bit more weight to it. It's not provided for the village of Elmont, so Lapeer County's data is applicable. According to the report, oh, sorry, assuming the village of Elmont follows the Lapeer County trend, its population may also decrease by 3.9% from 2,846 in 2020 to approximately 2,735 residents by 2045. Over time, it is anticipated that the largest age group of 55 to 75 years will decrease, with 35 to 54 years taking its place as the largest age group. The age group with the most growth over time is 75 years or older, while the age group Lapeer County is losing the most is 20 to 34-year-olds. Next, persons per household image on page 2-3. The number of persons per household constitutes household size. Since the 1970s, the nationwide trend has shown a decline in household size. The village of Elmont persons per household is 2.53, which is slightly higher than the state of Michigan at 2.48, and similar to Lapeer County at 2.55. This is a positive indicator of housing stability within the region. Household and family composition table on page 2-4. The highest percentage of households in the village of Elmont are married couple families at 56.9%. This percentage is nearly identical to Lapeer County. Elmont Township is predominantly occupied by married couple families at 70.0%. Another notable category for the village of Elmont is householders living alone at 22.3%. This value is the second lowest to all places shown on the table, only higher than Elmont Township at 13.5%. Income table on page 2-4. The table shows the median household and per capita income levels for the township and surrounding units of government for 2022, as well as projected values for 2027. As of 2022, the village of Elmont's median household income of $62,287 is almost identical to the state average, but lower than Lapeer County. The village's per capita income is the second lowest, just above Emlay City. Worker inflow and outflow image on page 2-5. Most residents of Elmont do not work within the village. The image shows the number of residents who live in the village and work elsewhere at 1,190, those who live and work in the village at only 43, or work in the village and live elsewhere at 307. This means the village of Elmont is primarily a bedroom community. Travel time to work on table, or travel time to work table on page 2-5. The table shows the average amount of time it takes a resident of a given place to commute one way to their place of employment. The commute time between 10 minutes to one hour would mean they could be within Oakland County, McComb County, or Lapeer County. Based on the 2021 American Community Survey five-year estimates, almost 86% drive alone for commuting, about 9% work from home. Are there any questions, comments?
One thing I'll add to your analysis, too, is one of the reasons that we specifically include, not just for the village, but kind of the context, you look at the township, you look at some of our peers in a lot of ways, so that's why I have cities on here, that's why there's villages on here, and then the county from a larger standpoint. And so this data kind of helps take us a snapshot of where we are as a community. And so at the very end, we kind of talk about some of those different important trends. So again, population generally increasing, we see a senior population that, from a planning standpoint, we may want to consider when we're looking at, where do we allow senior housing and things of that nature? One of the biggest decreases are 20 to 34-year-old age groups, and so that is a key demographic for a lot of communities, as far as those who grow up here and then they leave, and they aren't coming back immediately. And so a lot of communities who are not alone are worried about that trend and how do we stay competing? And that's why in the community survey, which we'll talk about in a little bit, we are going to try to target that current group and say, what can we do to make you come back or be interested in coming back? You can see that overall, our housing stock is pretty stable and things of that nature. We're going to get more into that next month when we talk about our housing study. So we're going to talk about how old our housing is typically, how many types of dwelling units, things of that nature. That's when we'll get more into that discussion.
Aren't we going to find, too, that within the limits of the village, coming up with additional housing is not going to be easy?
Correct. And so one of the things that I...
Like you said, we'd like to get people to come back, but we've got to have some place for them to live if we want them to come back, and that's a problem, I think, anyway.
There's two points to that. We'll get more into this discussion next time and see the density question.
I see the 75-year-olds are going to grow in population.
Correct.
That's not good.
So you're either going to have to worry about density, or you're going to have to acquire more landmass, really? Or you do changes in land use. So do we change some commercial or industrialism property and have it be multiple family? In some areas, sure. Some areas, not so much. And one thing that we're going to be watching is, again, that income, and as that changes, how that relates to affordability, specifically, that's a group of discussion for next time regarding your housing. So with that...
So even though you say that it's mainly a bedroom community, which I tend... So even though you say that it's mainly a bedroom community, which I tend to agree with you, would you also categorize it as a commuter, a commuter community as well? Cause a lot of people leave to go get work someplace else. I mean, traffic going in and out of here, uh, you know, in the morning and in the evening, there's a lot of people that are leaving that are, you know, besides the one, I mean, there's a certain group that that are now working at home, but you still have a certain group that just leave here because they have, their, their job is not within the village. It's, it's not even within the township, but they have to go someplace else.
That's accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can make a note.
It's analogous terms. Bedroom community and.
Yeah.
Commuter community, yeah. Try driving north on fifty-three starting about three P M. It's like, whoa. Yeah, it's incredible.
On Fridays, they even start early.
Yeah, because they're in vacation. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, you know.
Um, so our next item.
Yes.
Is the existing land use map. Um, we're gonna have more information on this next time, but we wanted to at least, um, kind of look over how we've generally categorized things. When we turn over to Brad, talk about how we made this map.
Okay, so I, we created this from scratch using ArcMap, which is a, a mapping software. Understanding existing land use helps us know the community, how the community is currently laid out and provides a basis for developing a plan of how we would like to see it grow. I used a combination of aerial viewers within that software and things like Google, just to find out what land uses are what. From there, I would search businesses and where they're located and what they do to differentiate. Is this a commercial use? Is this an industrial use? That being said, I'm not a perfect person, so if anything jumps out at you, please let us know. Are there any major things we missed? I know you guys are just, you might be looking at it for the first time.
So I do know that the Katelyn Phase Three area, um, technically, I think we've had a few homes due construction, um, associated with that. And so I didn't know if we've had, seen continuous development of there, where it makes sense to have the whole thing considered residential as a use? Or do we can still consider it vacant? I have not driven there recently to see how many homes have been built.
Eleven parcels still.
Remaining.
Remaining.
But that's over half, or no, about, just about half.
About, yeah.
Expect that Novak's not going to be doing any more building in there, as he announced to me this morning. That I'm not building in Elmont anymore. He's building some kind of a storage facility and he, he won't do it in Elmont. He's doing it in Emily. Just, he and a certain supervisor just.
Did he fill all the condos?
Not in love.
Did he fill all the condos that he built?
I think so.
Been by there a while.
I think so. Not sure. But yeah, that, that's the question. We don't know whether any other developers can step forth. Just don't know, but yeah, there was, there was a parting of the ways, unfortunately, so.
I have one question.
Sure.
The big blue area where it says North Maple and Sullivan, it says it's public, quasi-public. What is that?
Um, so that's north of these Novak Senior Center, so it's where the baseball field from the old miss.
Oh, okay.
Since they didn't take down the ball fields or anything, figured if anyone does a pickup game there, they will probably go hit shoot off.
That, that field is filled every night. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's.
And, and then there's a small spot, then, then you have that, that sort of like a, uh, tan, and then there's a little blue spot above that. That's also, what is that? I mean, if, if you know, I mean, it says it's public or quasi-public. Way over here?
Not off the top of my head, I'd have to go back.
Just north?
Oh, that's the church? Is that the church that's sitting there, just north of the Mobile Home Park? Okay. Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
If not, this will not be your first opportunity or your only opportunity to look at it. We'll be also talking about it more in depth next time, talking about, um, percentages of lot coverage and things of that.
I'm assuming that big blue section off of Water Street, that's the wastewater treatment plant?
That's right, in the park.
Right, okay.
One of the things, um, specifically with this, um, specifically, um, I guess where I'm, if you go, um, north of fifty-nine, the word turns. Um, so you can see some of those different pockets are considered vacant. This is not.
Three?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This isn't a true parcel-based inventory. Um, so there are some of those, um, parcels where we took the significant portion of the back part of the parcel that's not developed and put that more or less as vacant. Um, so just so that, um, we don't scratch our head and say, well, wait, we have all these floating parcels without access? No, it's the, from a land use perspective, we classify them a little bit differently, um, if the front half was something and the rear was something else.
Does any property run all the way to the trailer court? So what are you asking me? Property run all the way to the trailer court? Property that you used to own?
Yeah.
It ran to the area that was immediately west of the trailer park, the existing trailer park.
Which you're, you're north of the boundary. So if you go this way, just south.
Now I think about, yeah, I used to run with my dog through here. Yeah, I used to be able to get right into the trailer park. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's been a while, but yes, I could access it.
Are you talking about a property along, is it St. Clair?
No.
Yeah.
Um, or would it be this?
I'm married.
If I, I remember doing this, these were heavily wooded areas, so to do an existing land use, I'd call that vacant, just because it's a wooded area. If you'd like, I can go and change that back. But I, I did make the frontage of the property on the street, single-family residential, and then I just cut it.
That, that forest, that for, you can go into that forest and get eaten alive. I almost did, the mosquitoes, when my wife decided to get lost in there. So I own nine and a half acres right where Glenn has been pointing out, and yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's like true wilderness, maybe the Amazon or something.
Again, looking for those opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so our next chapter is talking about natural features. Um, so it's a little bit, it's quite a bit different from what our previous master plan did. Um, part of it is, is that we have different priorities. Um, so we don't have the same priority for rural preservation in a village setting as you do in a township. So rather than talking about where the, um, soils for farmland are, um, I instead chose to do basement sensitivity. So if you were to have a residential development, um, specifically, the green areas are where it's great to put a residential basement. If you get yellow, eh, somewhat, um, and then red is, you probably will not be permissible due to the soils, drainage, things of that nature. Um, and so those are different areas where you might see a slab, or could it be more conducive for multiple family who don't usually go um, below grade and things of that nature? Um, so that's what this map is, um, hoping to show. Next is talking about wetlands. Um, they provide an ecological service to our community, and so, um, shown in green are those general wetland areas. There's three different filters you can use. Um, so this is a combination of the national as well as the state's inventory. So those are generally speaking where those are, something to keep in mind, um, as we're thinking about development. Most of ours is located along a drain or along the creek, um, from a wetland standpoint, other than by Drakeshire, which we're pretty aware of. We are part of the Clin River Watershed, um, and we also have a really small portion in the Bell River Watershed as well. Um, but the primary, um, waterbed our creek goes to, which is our North Branch Creek, goes into the Clin River Watershed, which is a relatively active watershed coalition, um, that does different advertising and cleanup events and things of that nature. We have, um, a few different county drains that go through the village specifically. Um, the county map is quite difficult to read. But I guess looking at generally these locations of where those sections are, so we have the Bell River, um, we have the Fernan Drain, we have the Ferguson, or Ferguson, um, and then we got the Stroop Drain. So those are all different drains that are located within our village, um, that we have to be mindful of. They're not directly our jurisdiction, but are a water movement mechanism. One of the things I added was specifically talking about tree cover. Um, so as part of our tree preservation and tree credit kind of procedure, we have a separate ordinance for. It's encouraged from a, um, legal standpoint that you have a basis for some of those different rules, which is the whole point of the master plan. And so I provided some different benefits associated with street trees and which street coverage. A lot of these you may have heard, um, through media or things of that nature. And then as part of a continuation from your previous plan, talking about stewardship, um, so what are, what can we actually do from a policy standpoint? And so part of it's looking at our zoning ordinance and allowing best practices. Um, so looking at low development impact, is it clear that we would allow impervious surface? Or does our zoning ordinance literally say asphalt or concrete? So if we don't allow for, depending how that's written, you can have, it can be a more of a massaging than you really need to. Infiltration is opposed to having a spillway into a rain garden. Do we allow for those type things? Um, and then having natural buffers and things of that nature. Um, so that's kind of a snapshot of some of our major natural features, um, located within the village. Any questions? Next is talking about community facilities, so I did a quick refresh on this. Um, so some of the different, um, new sections that were specifically added is because of our aging community. I did want to make sure it was noted that the Lapeer County does have senior services that they do provide. Some of those services are at a fee, but some of those, it's just a matter of coordination and planning ahead. And so that is something that our population does have access to because we are part of Lapeer County. As part of a village, we also provide some other services regarding winter maintenance, but also brush pickup, um, and leaf pickup and things of that nature as part of our quality of life for residents, um, as a service we provide. We talk about, um, our schools. So we have our Elmont Community Schools complex, um, just outside of our village boundaries, in which we do have a liaison police officer that accompanies. One of the major changes we made is we updated the Parks and Recreation Plan description. Uh, we tried to take highlights from that, because you can go to the full Parks and Recreation Master Plan, um, to go through the full scope, but this is kind of just trying to get some of the highlights of that. One of the things that we'll hopefully be building on is one of those key strategic components of the recreation plan is potential pathway expansion. And when we talk next month about our sidewalk inventory, um, this is something we'd probably want to keep in mind is also these other routes as part of our sidewalk network that we want to keep in mind. Um.
Place. But they might have gymnastics. I, I don't know.
We took from their plan, so I don't have a very good answer for you on that, and I wasn't part of the team that put that together. Sure. You got that notice? All right, thank you.
Here, that, uh, we do have, um, assisted, assisted living facility now in Elmont. It's, it's in Novak's.
Yes.
Yeah. There, and plus, they do have senior activities, almost on a daily basis, inside of that area, what, where they have independent living. Yeah, just, you know, regular senior living. So that does exist within the village. Okay.
Um, is next is talking about our DDA, um, so our development, a downtown development authority. Um, so specifically some highlights from there. We also referenced their plan, so we tried to take the highlights of their plan as far as their implementation, because you should go read their full plan, um, to get the full context. But showing generally speaking where our DDA is, and as far as I know, they have the same general seven different main objectives, of which they're focusing their, um, resources towards. Um, continuing the library description, so that was previously listed. Um, I added a description talking more about the municipal offices, um, so our shared office space that we're sitting in right now. Updated the description for police and fire. One of the things I do take out typically is numbers associated with staffing, because we only change the master plan maybe every five years. Staffing can change more frequently than that, and so I try not to put data in there. That one, it's not really a policy direction on having five officers for seven, um, but I do want to make sure that we have these different type of positions kind of situation. So that, those are why those descriptions are quite a bit smaller, is I didn't want frequently changing numbers in there. Um, and that is our community facility section. So next is our community survey, so I made a handful of edits that we talked about last time. I'm gonna hand it over back to Brad to kind of walk us through one of the new ideas we have, or one of the other things we had talked about, how that works.
Okay, so to start, we plan to provide a limited number of paper copies for this survey. The majority, the majority of it will be available online. It is eighteen to twenty-two questions, depending on the age of respondents, and by that, I mean, in this survey, I created a, what's called a logic, where it asks, one of the first question is, one of the first questions is, how old are you? And if you say you're twenty-four years old or younger, you get an extra four questions that focus on their future goals and interests in staying local. And what, like, what, what would be something that would entice them to stay in Elmont in the future for their career? The, then back to the regular survey, which everybody will be able to access. Sections include general questions, economic development questions, and housing questions. It's not yet open, but it's set to close September twentieth. Since it's not open, that date can change at your guys' discretion.
Okay? Mm-hmm.
Macomb, Utica, stuff like that for restaurants.
So you'd like more locations added?
Yes.
Okay. I have Macomb, Utica, anything else?
South of us, we got there? Good talk, yeah.
And then, as we discussed earlier, we'll add, um, specifically a question, if you have an idea for a slogan, what would that be? And so we'll probably put that under the general header, so it'll probably be a question, uh, let's see. Uh, let's do it before, what would you change about Elmont? We'll do it before then.
Good question.
Sure.
How are we gonna let the public know this is out there now?
Um, so we have two different main strategies. Um, one is we are hoping that we can coordinate with the village to post a link on their website and utilize social media.
Can we do that?
And then one of the other things is, um, we'll encourage them to our different respective, um, boards. So that's village council, our DDA, our parks board, asking for them to also, if they have a social media platform, posting the URL link, um, to be a part of that or mentioning it during their meetings. Um, you as individual members, if you could say, hey, have you taken your community survey yet? We're also proposing to have some flyers. Um, so one, those flyers will have Q R codes, so if you're, everyone used to that with COVID, you go up to it, you go with your phone, and then it gives you a link to a, essentially a website. The other way we're planning on coordinating is with the schools. Um, so when school's back in session, we're hoping to reach out to their administration to say, would you be willing to, have this survey distributed either to those that are parents or specifically students that are within our community? Our survey is geared that it doesn't have to be somebody just living here, but the thing is, is when they give us this information and click an option, we can query results based on if you selected living. we can query results based on if you selected living here or own a business. So we can specifically query results if you have a vested interest in our Elmont community. And we, we usually look at that data first to kind of see, does it change anything significantly or not?
Just curious, do, should this survey be shared with council before it goes out? I'm, I'm just asking, that's all. You know, I don't know what the, you know, I don't know what, what, what the mood is on the council all the time. And that's the reason I ask that question.
I certainly don't have any issue with presenting it to council, making it aware of it, or sharing it. But I don't think we need council approval for this.
Okay.
Planning commission is fine. And I, I don't go on social media, so I can only go by hearsay. So like Elmont's parent group and, and social media, there's several sites where people exchange ideas, mostly critical, everybody sitting here. And so I suppose contacting people who were involved in that would be another potential. People are, from what I understand, people are on there a lot to say a lot of things. A lot of conspiracy theories, of course, but.
Yeah.
Some, some things of value, especially the parents groups.
I just throw that out. I'm just curious if you want to at least share with them before it all of a sudden goes out there and then, you know, one of the.
You can't reel it back.
Yeah, yeah. One of the council members looks, says, what in the world are they doing now? You know, I mean, I just thinking out loud that.
It's not up to them. I think it's up to us.
Yeah, I mean.
When do those get sent out? I think they are, some of ours are already sent out.
Tax bills are out. Both village and township tax.
Because the next one would be winter, and that's too late.
That's too late.
Um, so with.
Anything else? And this.
Put on the water bill?
Huh?
Put on the water bill?
Already got the water bill. Well, that's too late.
It's too late. You're right.
The water bill's already out for now. How often do you get mail? Once a month? Excuse me. Caitlin, are we ready to move on?
That is all I have for you on the master plan. We have more next time.
We have some bring backs for next meeting, correct?
Correct. You'll see some of the same information, but a lot new information.
Okay.
Next meeting is the last long data dump, is I guess how I'll classify that.
All right, let's move on to food truck text amendment. At our last meeting, we discussed the problem with food trucks. And we asked Caitlin to work on a possible language for an amendment or to our zoning ordinances that would address the issue of food trucks. And so go ahead and let us know where we're at.
Sure. So one of the options we discussed was specifically making a change in our zoning ordinance because zoning ordinance are the gatekeeper of all uses. And so we didn't feel like it quite fit a lot of the other categories. And so what we did was is we wanted to say, let's see what food trucks on their own, what should they be classified as and what are the regulations associated with that? So we talked about they should be special land uses in our C2 zoning districts. So that's north of our downtown area along Van Dyke and then potentially allowing them into industrial. So what I provided in red on the front part of this table is a definition for food trucks. A few options associated with parking, we would pick one of the three. The Ours are giving you options. And then A through E are potential language based on other communities and how they regulate food trucks or similar temporary mobile units. And then for reference, I included open air businesses and outdoor sales because they're not quite the same thing, but they're somewhat familiar. And so I copied some of the languages associated with that because it's always better to have similar uses treated similarly. And then just as a note, the other thing I did include was an example of from the city of Linden. They actually have a separate ordinance that polices food truck and requires them to register. I didn't specifically recommend that because of the scale and size of how many we would anticipate coming in and out and the tracking of that. It is another procedural step. If we do want to go that route, this is some general proposed language. As part of their development of the language, they also kind of did their own research associated showing some maps. And so that's something we could help develop to help us make decisions if we're looking at setbacks from existing restaurants, if that is a primary concern and mapping that out. We are not as big in some ways. And so I don't know that that would be a very difficult map to imagine what that would look like because it would be most of the downtown and then it would be all along Van Dyke because you have A and W there. Unless they don't, and then McDonald's just farther down. So we really don't have a good otherwise commercial spot to make a map worthwhile, but this is something other communities have done to help figure out what's the best route.
Sentiment from village administration regarding these and which direction you'd like to point us in? Because it comes down to, well, what's best for the village and enforcement issues? What's practical?
The, the primary issue that has cropped up based on complaints from some of our business owners is a particular food truck vendor who likes to park in the downtown district on Sundays and utilize some parking spaces in front of an ongoing business that's open on that particular day. I've heard through the grapevine that even though that particular vendor was notified that you can't do what you're doing, that they're still coming back and maybe parking in a different area up the street so that they're not in front of, you know, the business that's open on Sunday. So, so I know, you know, if I were a food truck vendor, you know, I would want to go and park where there's more visibility, if you will, more traffic, less competition from the McDonald's and the A and W. So, you know, you know, so how do we preclude a food truck vendor from camping in our downtown district based on, you know, the proposal that's before us? That's kind of gearing or trying to steer them toward maybe the north end of town, which probably isn't the most viable spot for a food truck vendor. So, so I'm not, I'm not saying I want to encourage food truck vendors. I'm just offering that as, you know, part of the consideration of how do we manage it? How do we enforce it, et cetera? So.
My reaction to what you just said is I don't think I'm inclined towards serious consideration to what's most beneficial to the food truck. As they have to go to the north end, they have to go to the north end. Fine, so what? And, and I have an issue with food truck being in direct competition with our going businesses because they have a tough enough time. So I guess I'm looking at the existing businesses as the priority in my mind in the food truck.
With, with this language, this really, I'm going along with what David is thinking. This doesn't really define where they're going to be, does it? It does?
So the, the zoning ordinance would only allow it in their C2 and our I1 zoning district. Because it's a special land use, we're also locking them into a procedure. So if you want to be a food truck and operate, you have to come to the planning commission, hold a public hearing, so if everyone within three hundred feet gets notified. And then you can operate your food truck.
I see.
So this is what, how we currently have it drafted, that is how it would go into the zoning ordinance.
Question on that.
Yep.
How do you define the three hundred feet if it's portable?
So as part of their special land use application, they're required to provide a site plan or plot plan. And so all of these properties have a property owner, which we require consent from. And so what we've done in other communities is says, give me an aerial and show me where in your parking lot are you going to generally be? And how many parking spots are you going to take up? So if they go in, figured, and pass the mobile or maybe they go in the bank on Sunday. They go in their parking lot because nobody's there. That's something that they would show on their site plan. They'd say temporarily we take up five parking spaces and we will always be on the Van Dyke side as far away from the driveway. So that's how we would, and that's part of the enforcement mechanism is we, you said this is what you were going to do and we'd enforce it like any other violator. This is what you said you were going to do and we're going to make you do what you said you're going to do. And so it makes those pop-up events specifically that, that would be something you don't have the prep for permit. You don't have a special land use to be in our DDA parking lot and you don't have approval from our DDA or the village to have this use here. It's a use argument. So the bigger caveat, which I highlighted in yellow, is giving them an exception for food trucks do not need a special land use if they're accessory to a festival or village sponsored event. Because, because typically communities put them in two different wheelhouses. If you're part of a music in the park and you offer two extra food trucks, everyone generally saying, well, you're part of that event. You're going to pop up there for the three hours or whatever, and then you're going to move along. And so that's the precursor. Yes.
But then they're also following the special land use requirements. No, they're not. I mean, not for the festival, I mean in general, because you have it under special land use, is that correct?
No, because they're not going, we, through that definition, we have excluded them from being a use that has to go through this process.
Okay. What leverage do we have if they continue to set up downtown? What, what's the next step?
Um, so part of it is, is, so let's say if it was a building and they were occupying the building and they weren't supposed to be occupying the building. You go through the same general procedure where you say you don't have permission to do this. You have an immediate stop or, and you have to get out kind of a thing.
Is this a phone call to the police? Do we send?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe they're the body that enforces from a zoning. And because then it would be in our ordinance book, they can point to specific provisions. Right now, we don't have that same easy gravity, um, gratitude to kind of point to exactly what it is. So that's how we would go about doing that. Beyond issuing, I think you can do your different tickets and stuff of that nature as well. I'd have to verify your full enforcement, but I believe you also have that as part of your penalty section. That's something that can be pursued. I'm not as familiar though, because we don't luckily involve me in that portion of the process often.
And as I've had a little bit more time to digest and hear some of the comments, I'm kind of leaning that this is probably the preferable way to go. You know, we want to protect our restaurant businesses in town that are open on the weekend from, you know, food truck vendors. You know, going forward, our parks board has taken the initiative to arrange for a couple of food trucks to be present at the park for a couple of the concerts this summer. You know, we're going to kindly look the other way, if you will, because we want to encourage people to go to the concert. And if they're going to have a food truck there to provide refreshments and food, that's great because those people are out of sight, out of mind, if you will. They're not competing against our local businesses that are open during the evening hours. So, so if we can create a district, if you will, that forces these food truck vendors to solicit the property owner to get permission to set up camp and they have to come through this body and get approval, I think that's going to deter a lot of that activity anyway, which, you know, to, to me would be a positive direction for us.
Was one in the church parking lot weekend before last. And it happened to be connected to one of our businesses in town.
Yes.
And I thought, oh, all right, so I'll call and see whether, and she said, no, we're already closed up. It was for a special occasion and I guess they must have had permission from the church to park it in the church parking lot.
Sinclair?
Yeah, they, they did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I thought it was open and I figured, hey, I'd call and see if they operate, offer the same menu as they do in their, in their brick and mortar business. And she said, no, we're already closed. We had it open for a special occasion and the special occasion is over, so. But they do have a food truck that goes along with their business. The one on the corner.
Stick Bluebird.
I mean, it's a nice truck. I mean, it's a big, huge trailer is what it is.
I guess on that example, Mr. Chairman, Caitlin, would we need to have some additional language regarding existing businesses that have a food truck?
So how I would put that is if you are for the sale of food for a public consumption. So this is different than if you decide at your little kid's party to have the snow cone guy come. That's different. Same thing if a business, if in the industrial park, they want to have Taco Tuesday and do an employee appreciation. We're not wanting to make them go through a special land use process to do an event.
I think what David's saying is, is we've got a business in town that also has a food truck, so.
They do.
They roll up at nine Main Street on Sunday. How is that, how is that affected since they're a brick and mortar?
Oh, so the linkage to being a brick and mortar or not has no association. If you are a mobile, if you're, if you are a food truck selling, if you're an existing business or not, they wanted to regularly do that at the church, they would eventually need a special land use. And so usually there's two triggers to these special land uses. So putting my Lapeer hat on at, at one point in time, Walmart did an application so they can have a rotating food truck there. So they filed the special land use application so then they can have some random food truck there in this specific area and take up this many parking spaces. Other ones have done where it's one food truck that says, I'm going to be at these three different locations, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, these hours. I have, here's the consent from the property owners to do so. So either it's the food truck supplying or it's a business owner that wants them long-term doing this on a regular basis.
So if that particular business pulled that food truck or trailer, whatever happens to be, right in front of their business, can we still cite them for not getting the proper authority? We can do that?
Right.
Okay.
Um, so decisions tonight, if you otherwise like the language that's currently drafted, is to pick from one of the three options for parking. So option one is two parking spaces per operation on site. Other one is four spaces per operation on site and then per review by the planning commission. Because it has to be a special land use anyway, they have to come here. However, by putting it very discretionary, it, it doesn't help the administration answer the question, well, how much parking do I need? My food truck needs three spaces. Do you need more than that? And so that's what the pros and cons of that specific situation.
What's typical of the size? Two always work?
Um, two can work. Part of it is, is that this is a relatively temporary use. People do not dwell typically when they go to a food truck. You might have a few people, but they don't have, other than maybe one picnic table or something that's mobile or two folding chairs. You really don't have people sit there very often. And this is not including where the vendor's taking up the parking spaces. This is for somebody visiting the food truck to stay. That's the intent. Otherwise, you're just occupying a space. This is meant for patrons.
They have to come to us anyway. I mean, I, I would sort of be inclined to the review.
Does that make things more complicated for the village though? If it's been reviewed?
So, you know, the, the individual that's been the, the Sunday camper was taking up two of the parallel parking spaces in front of Bichelle's. So.
That's a bad spot. People are trying to get in and out of Speedway. He's in a bad spot. he's in a bad spot there. The only problem with, I, I mean, one problem I see if we just leave it, we only meet once a month. Suppose the event occurs in between when we meet.
And it's not an event. We exclude events.
Pardon?
We're excluding special events.
Truck owner and I want to do business here in Elmwood. I can't pull up and talk to the administration and say, I'm going to take up two spaces. They got to come before us and have a public hearing before they can even do their business.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to, they have to come here anyway. They can tell us what they're looking for.
Good point. Good point. Yeah, this individual that's kind of, uh, picked our backyard to try to get some weekend business, uh, if I'm not mistaken, is, uh, based out of New Baltimore. And so travels from, you know, southeast corner of Macomb County and comes up this way.
You gotten many requests?
No.
Okay.
But, uh, to the point of, you know, having an, you know, some language in place, you know, if, if I'm a food truck vendor and, uh, you know, and I'm going to market myself, then I need to be proactive and reach out to the community ahead of time and do that in the early spring if I'm planning on wanting to do business, uh, you know, during, during the, the warm weather months and be able to have that relationship with the property owner that I can camp out, uh, at a location and, uh, and go through the process of, uh, a site plan review with you folks. So.
So, so then David, you don't think the, having them come for us for the number of parking spaces would put any undue, uh, you know, additional work on you then? You don't? Okay.
Who's the food truck that sits up at Mobile Works?
Sorry, where?
In the township.
Right in the road.
Oh, yeah, that's a.
The northeast corner.
And the taco one.
Yeah.
I don't know what the food truck's called, but it's a taco one. You're Mexican.
No.
Well, then does the review work for us then? Yes? Yes? Yes. Okay. That's what we're going to do.
Um, quickly going over A through E, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, one of the things that we require is that fencing or other temporary method to define the sales area. Um, so figuring out what they want to do, if they want to do essentially poles with the little loop or something of that nature, something that helps us define where that area is and somebody shouldn't park there. Um, but they're temporary in nature. The second one is making sure it's on a paved and, um, properly drained surface. Um, so making sure it's not on the grass. Um, that's essentially what that's prohibiting or gravel, if that's something that's still existing. Um, next is talking about the operation shall meet the same building and structural setback. So if we don't allow a building there, then we're not allowing a food truck there. Um, and then looking at a review annual by the planning commission. So this would then become a constant item every, if they applied in July and got approved in July, they'd be back every July, um, specifically. Some communities, they don't, they'll do sometimes an annual review, but only if something has changed. So it's up to you if you would like to have the more oversight approach where you come annually, even if there's nothing being proposed to be changed, or if you would like to, if only there's a change, they would have to come back and revise their application. And then lastly, it's making sure the applicant, um, will include additional information. So making sure they have support from the property owner, method of power, generator information, copy of the health department, approval, hours of operation, days of the week and plot plan. So these are all trying to make it easy for that applicant to make sure it's clear. These are additional things you need to have thought out before you come to us. Alrighty.
Absolutely.
So the next step in the process, if you're comfortable, would be then to hold a public hearing. Do we feel comfortable?
Yes. 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 Okay.
Great. Public hearing it is. Uh, it's up to you if you would like to do a motion.
Next meeting?
Yep, we could.
Okay. Do you, okay, David?
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Thank you, Caitlin.
You're welcome.
Next item is unfinished business. Does anybody have anything to bring before us or discuss? David, do you have any items for us?
Uh, just real quick, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we're, uh, having some dialogue with the, uh, purchaser of the movie theater and medical building. Uh, we've met with one of his representatives that has, uh, shared with us some, uh, renderings of a s- potential site plan. Uh, and it's a very interesting concept that they're proposing. And, uh, I'll keep you, uh, intrigued with that for right now because they've asked me to keep it confidential. Uh, they're planning on still trying to get some state funding possibly. Uh, there was a program called RAP 2.0 that the deadline for applying for that was the end of June. Uh, there's rumors that there's going to be a RAP 2 point something, uh, coming up later this year with some additional funding, uh, available. And it's a very comprehensive application. And, uh, by the time they, you know, came up with the concept and trying to put all the numbers together, because you actually have to do a pro forma, uh, calculate profits, expenses and all that. And they just weren't in a position to compile that, uh, extensive data, uh, by the end of June. So they're going to be working on that over the next couple of months, you know, in preparation for the next cycle. Uh, but, uh, you know, it's something that looks like it's going to move forward. Uh, I'm very optimistic about what's going to happen, uh, on the east side of M53, uh, hopefully next year when they start building. And, uh, uh, one other thing I just wanted to advise you of is that, uh, next week, uh, we've got a tentative meeting set up with the ownership of Kingsbrook. Uh, they want to have some casual dialogue about potential expansion of the mobile home park. Uh, there's, uh, a, a new, um, let's say incentive, if you will, where they've hired a reputable firm to actually start doing major maintenance projects in the community there, uh, where, uh, their business model is to try to fill every vacant spot in the current site plan with new homes and remodel the exterior of all the older existing models as well. And, uh, and if they actually achieve that, and we've, and we've had the opportunity to actually meet with the, uh, leadership of the company that they've hired to do this project. And so the owner of Kingsbrook wants to sit down with me and, uh, the representatives of the, uh, uh, firm that's doing all the remodeling work and the installation, uh, to, uh, you know, just have the dialogue of, you know, what would it take for us to be able to do that? Uh, I see some major hurdles that would have to be overcome. One is that to extend water and sewer to the adjoining property that they're interested in acquiring is in the township. And so that would have to be annexed. Uh, and, uh, and so, you know, again, you know, is that something that the township is willing to let go? Uh, my understanding, and Caitlin, correct me if, if I'm misunderstanding it, is that if we were to annex that property, the township by nature of state statute would have to try to identify another parcel in the township to be zone mobile home park because we would have acquired, uh, we would have annexed the property that is currently zoned, uh, mobile home.
As to that?
Yeah.
Instead of annexing? Annex is a poison word.
And, and I guess, you know, is that another alternative, you know, based on what our ordinance says, we would have to annex the property unless we, you know.
And we don't have to be the applicant. The, the mobile home can be the applicant of the annexation since they are the ones asking for that use.
The additional sewage cause a problem for our plant?
Yes.
Well, we, we could have some friendly discussion about that. Uh, you know, based on the number of units that they're proposing, uh, we are in the midst of, uh, and I guess I'll segue to it, you know, some of our, uh, infrastructure projects. Uh, we are going to be finishing up this month, a, a relining of a lot of the, uh, sewer lines in the community, uh, that we've identified as major sources of infiltration for water that obviously affect, you know, how much volume goes to our wastewater treatment plant. So once we have some summer storms this, uh, over the next couple of months and evaluate, you know, what kind of impact has this relining done to minimize, uh, the infiltration. Uh, on a normal typical day, you know, where it's been dry, you know, during the month of June, for example, and May where we've been three weeks without any rain, uh, you know, the, uh, the, you know, my, my wastewater treatment guys are saying, we don't have enough flow. We need more, we need, we need more water. Things are stagnating, you know, we need to move things around.
Yeah.
Uh, so a little bit of flow is good, but too much flow obviously is a problem. And, uh, we're trying to minimize how much flow we're getting so that it provides us the flexibility to look at, um, expansion.
Yeah.
Development of housing, uh, in the southeast part of the village, uh, you know, as far as the Kailin sub, uh, and even something like this as far as, uh, the mobile home park. Who would have thought that they'd become knocking on our door saying, you know, we want to expand and, and grow, uh, because they see that there's a, a market need for that type of housing. And so, uh.
Decades.
This is happening for decades. Water and water down.
Right. Is the park under new ownership?
Well, it, it would be good, you know, if you can, if you could solve the infiltration problem of outside water, you know, that gets into the wastewater treatment plant.
But, uh, you know, if, if indeed, and we'll be able to, you know, assess this over the course of the next few months to see if their, you know, if their talk, you know, matches the, you know, if the walk ma- matches the talk. Uh, but, uh, uh, you know, based on what has happened in, you know, my brief tenure, we're coming up on my two-year anniversary and one of the first issues that I was tasked with was trying to, uh, develop a repayment plan from Kingsbrook and we were successful in doing that. Uh, and so they've been on, on board and on time ever since, uh, that plan took effect. And so I'm encouraged with, you know, some of the leadership, new people that are in place and with this firm because a year ago I was told, you know, here's our plan. We're going to do A, B, and C and it fell apart. And it turned out that the contractor that they had hired to do all this work, uh, has found to be, uh, let's say negligent, if you will, actually being sued, uh, hounded by several other communities, uh, because of a poor workmanship and so on. And, uh, you know, possibly losing his license. And so they've hired this new firm that's based in Westland to come in and start, uh, installing, uh, a lot of the, uh, new homes. In fact, we actually brought in our, uh, building official from construction code to meet with, uh, these folks, uh, because, uh, he was able to report that, you know, some of the, uh, footings and, uh, you know, things of that nature were, were insufficient. You know, they didn't meet code and that was delaying the installation of a lot of these new homes because the prior contractor, uh, was not doing the job properly. So, so they've canned that guy and they've brought in this new firm and, uh, they've been very, uh, responsive to, uh, some of the things that I've already asked for and have complied with. So, uh, again, you know, it's a, it's a work in progress. We'll see how the discussion ensues this coming week and we'll give you an update at our next meeting to let you know what's transpired. But that's, uh, that's what's, uh, on the horizon is that they have.
Park I'm doing, is he going to open up?
It's a very slow process. Again, it's one of those things where between the contractors that he had hired and, you know, the timing and when material was available and then their schedules keep changing, uh, it's just been very slow.
Ship of the park's still the same, just new restructuring lead, leadership.
New management.
Yeah, but it's still the same owner.
Same, same owner.
And that owner owns five different parks. I understand.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the history, but, uh, or how long.
Last six months, they've made vast changes of improvement in there. They, I mean, at one point they had a sinkhole by a sewer that was three feet deep. They repaved a lot of the roads in there. As David said, they've removed several old trailers, um, where their pump houses right on the other side of the ball fields. They've got six or seven trailers waiting to be put in, uh, new lots and stuff like that. So they're, they're, the, the action David's talking about is actually happening. There, there's a lot of new homes being transitioned out and new ones being put in.
On that very point, you just jogged my memory, Mr. Dyke, uh, on the pump house because you had raised that issue, uh, at a council meeting recently. And, uh, we were fortunately meeting with, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the contracting crew, uh, a couple of days later. And, uh, Brian and I went out and took a field trip to evaluate, you know, the status of that pump house, which was in total disrepair, uh, needed a complete cleaning up. Uh, we met with these folks. Uh, I emailed the president of that firm the next morning and the next day they went in and cleaned up that entire pump house and Brian and I went and did an inspection and it was immaculate.
Um, a few days after I reported it, actually doing the, the fix and repairs.
Yeah. So again, you know, an indicator of, you know, the, the company trying to put their best foot forward and actually, uh, uh, making some improvements that, uh, they, they claim that they want to make. So, and went and worked with us.
If they're filling every single, their goal is to fill every single spot within the park, uh, then you have a density issue which can have dynamic effect on, it's going to happen inside there. Cause funny happens in there anyway. It's a very, it's a very active area, shall we say, for our police department.
Yes.
For, um, as I have been told directly, um.
They've got some ambitious plans. Uh, they're, they're planning on doing a new clubhouse, uh, a new playscape area for children. I mean, they've got, uh, they've got a nice business model outlined on what improvements they want to make to the community as part of their, you know, growing it and then future expansion as well.
With regard to, to the movie theater, um, do you know whether, um, the soil testing results from the phase two have come back?
I am not aware of those results.
That's going to tell whether that deal's going to go forward. And I know, talking to the, the environmental team that showed up to do phase two, that they had to send on to the, to the lab for, for the test results. That'll be a key, I would imagine. If it doesn't come back well.
I'll make a phone call and follow up on that point. I'm glad you mentioned it.
Yeah.
Has anything happened with the saddlery anymore?
No, we have not heard back from that gentleman and, uh, based on, you know, what his wife told us a few months ago.
He was in a big hurry, wasn't he?
Yeah, it seemed like it at the time. So, but, uh, you know, it's, it's been quiet. Nobody's been knocking on our door for any site plan reviews.
Did the purchase ever go through?
Yes.
It did?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. They, they, that was what was surprising.
Yeah.
They just kind of ran it through even though they didn't get the conditions that they were looking for, uh, or exceptions, whatever. We're just going ahead and doing it. And it was surprising. I mean, it sounded like a kind of reckless decision or foolish, not getting the solid ground that you want and buying the property.
I know the lady wanted out from underneath.
Oh, yeah.
Any way possible. So it's.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Kim, do you have anything for us?
Sorry?
Nope.
I heard a rumor about Mikey's.
That's true. It's in, it's in process.
Being sold?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm, uh, representing, I'm representing one of the parties.
And then, um, Huddle, uh, yeah, Huddles, what the, did you ever find the owner?
Uh, we did, yes. Angela Edwards, uh, had the good fortune of, uh, checking with, uh, um, Oakland County or somebody that, uh, to find out, uh, um, his, uh, phone number and he answered. And, uh, and, uh, he claims that he's planning on doing something to remodel and have it open by the fall.
Really?
That's what he claims.
Hmm.
So we'll see if that actually happens.
Yes.
Yes.
But yeah, we're coming up on a one-year anniversary of him closing things up. So.
So you would put your, you might remember, send one of the parties, um, in the transaction, and so you have to go through a very complicated, sometimes very long process with Liquor Control Commission, and I have experience with that, and so we, if, do this, and do this, and do this, and do this, and do this. But, um, so we have to go through all of that, and uh, and then the lawyers are banging heads a little bit, like, seriously? You, you're putting that illegal language in your agreement? Um, so, yeah, it's, it's a, a long process, but it's probably gonna happen, and it's, it is on its way going forward, and the purchasers are pretty serious about wanting to make this happen. So, and then, and the person buying it is a businessman, and a pretty good one, actually.
That's a start. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Steve and who? Tim? Yep, here we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. We are done. Caitlin, thank you very much.
Yeah, great presentation.
Very good job. Very good job.
We're sore water.
Oh, it's nice?
Yeah, that's, that's gonna end up.
I completely forgot it was our fishing. Have fun. Thirty-three people this year.
Oh, really? Wow. Nice.
Yeah. I know.
How's the tax base? Steve, how's the tax base working on mobile home?